All right, welcome everyone to the December first meeting. It's been a few weeks since we've seen each other. Minutes of the November tenth meeting, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on the minutes, hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries financial report payment of the bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report. So, second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on financial report? Hearing none, all in favor, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Kathy Metzler is here, Kathy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I am happy to say that we have successfully through our recruitment and have hired Andy Rodriguez as the next incoming HR director. And he brings with him a wealth of experience which I would like to tell you a little bit about.
Hi, Andy. All my experience come from a lot of failures, start with learning from failures, but thank you very much, I feel very welcomed. I did actually get the interview process, told it to a lot of people about the interview process. They said, how many people were there, that's around ten or eleven, were you nervous? I wasn't nervous at all, everyone made me feel really welcome and I really appreciate that.
We're kind of down home folks here.
Yeah, I mean, it was very nice, I really appreciate that, the questions were great questions, Mr. George from everyone. And it's nice to talk to Michelle today and she also kind of reiterated that they're, you know, they're, this is a family. And that's what attracts me to working with the town of Elton, I really appreciate the opportunity. I've been working in HR for close to twenty-five years, worked in long-term care and worked with the little system for utilization. And they're very, very heartbroken that I'm leaving, but they understand I'm having a new calling, so I really appreciate the opportunity, I hope I meet everyone's expectations.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you too, it's been my pleasure to serve the town of Elton.
Thank you Kathy. Anyone have any questions or any comments?
Hello Kathy, you have done a good job, miraculous job, town of Elton, unfortunately, you know, there will become a separation, but on behalf of, I think I've advised it, would like to say thank you for your services.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's going to be strange with them.
Well, I think the one thing that we have been able to establish, and Renee's been a big part of this, is to have an open door policy in HR. And that's something I think that was being voiced in, had before, so I think that's been great progress over these past three years. I'm going to leave it to Andy to continue the, with the good work.
Thank you.
He's got his word, allow for it, trust me.
He's up to the challenge.
That's good.
I'd like to comment that Kathy Metzler has been an in moves asset to the town of Elton, where she's been with us. And I've asked her to stay for a transitional period with Andy because there's some serious matter to do with renown. And Renee's part of that team too, so we've had a good HR department and we look forward to having Andy at the helm of that department going forward.
Thank you, she did mention she stayed, you're right.
Yeah, there you go, I would, I would like to just make a comment in general, what kind of my thinking and beliefs are. And I know that we have a lot of openings in the police department and public works and, and throughout the town, of course. We do our best to try and find diversity because we are a diverse community and I'd like to really put that at the top. Keep that, for everyone to keep that in mind, I think it's important for our community and I think it would go a long way. Thank you.
And if I might add one thing, I just want to bring that up, I talked to the mayor about it this morning. And we'll be meeting later to give you our thoughts on the process of diversity that we would like to see you put forward. Because numbers, long ago and numbers now have not differed that much, but it's in your hand to make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got discussion, I see Mr. Ed Genders here, I don't see Mr. Russell, but he's representing the Shop for a Cop event. And I've got a map here in front of me and I'm sure you want to talk about the route.
Well, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to appear before you, Jimmy Russell had a time emergency, so he will not be here. Within the past couple of weeks, the board decided to follow through with having the Shop for a Cop event. Two years ago, before the COVID, we had over a hundred, I think it was a hundred and three children a week service. This time it's going to be about seven and five. We had a lot of requests from the schools, the guidance counters from the elementary schools about parents contacting them to see if the Shop for a Cop event was going to go through. There's a lot of needy children in the area, so we decided to step up and we're going to run through with it. The event will be December the twelfth, it's a Sunday. All you are invited to attend, it will start at eight o'clock at Singly Fire Hall. We plan on leaving there between nine thirty and ten o'clock, start shopping at Walmart at ten. We should be returning back between eleven thirty and twelve, Sunday morning. Initially, the route that we were going to take went by the Presbyterian Church and Methodist Church. And I brought that to the attention of Jimmy and his wife, that we're going to be going by there with all the sirens blaring from the police cars, emergency vehicles, to my service hours, and so we decided to change the route. We plan on coming out Downbridge Street to Main, out Main to South Street. Take a right on South Street to Old Berkeley Law Office, go down to Howard and Howard to Del Avenue, about Del Avenue, about Route forty, then to Walmart. Coming back, we'd be coming back Del Avenue, onto Howard, to South, to High Street, down to North Street, then out to North Street, to Elton North Road, come back that way. So we would not be bucking traffic like we have in the past down Main Street.
Perfect.
And we have contacted the churches to let them know that there will be some sirens in the area, not to be upset or anything that something is going on, so.
I have to tell you, a few years ago, when, when they decided to take the route through downtown, it was pretty exciting. There was, there was folks on the sidewalk that was kind of cheering along with it, it wasn't, it truly was an exciting event. It would be great if we could, it's truly a parade, it's a parade of cars that's coming through there. And how many, how many vehicles were in the?
There were ninety-eight vehicles last year.
Ninety-eight?
Yes.
So it was pretty exciting to see that many law enforcement vehicles from throughout the, throughout the county coming through. So if there's any way that we could kind of advertise that maybe it is a little bit of a parade coming through that Sunday, it might excite some of the youth, the out there, parents to see it. So I, I, I was pretty excited, I actually filmed it a couple of years ago and I thought it was it was, I thought that parade was better than any parade that we really had, it was very exciting.
We have the services from the Sheriff's Department, State Police, and the town of Elton. And also, we've contacted Far Police and they're going to help us out again, so as far as traffic control, it should not be a problem.
As long as you got the chief, we're in great shape.
I'll be there.
We hope, hope a lot of participation from the town, so.
Okay, do you need anything else from us?
No, I do not.
All right, perfect.
Just show up.
All right, I thought you were going to ask for money, so that's good. Andy, before you go, I noticed that you're coming down High Street to obstruct Main Street, you didn't want to disrupt Main Street. Was there, were there complaints to businesses about their Shop for a Cop event?
I'm sure they're disappointed because we were hoping that we could run it on a Saturday, but it just did not work out as far as Singly Fire Hall. And that's, that was our main area, as far as our main venue, as far as gathering, because of the number of people involved. I had brought up the point, hopefully, if Fire Hall wasn't available, I'll use a community center. But we do not need that resource at this time, so. But yes, we were hoping we could have done it on a Saturday when all the local merchants would have been in town and it's going to open up for and hopefully, Sunday morning, there will be some more people there.
As the mayor said, it was quite an exciting event and everyone seemed to enjoy it.
Yes.
Main Street is typically more well-attended than High Street, I think. So there's all that set in stone, I definitely do High Street.
And with, with the COVID issue, we're going to require all to wear a mask for the day off, so.
With it being on Sunday, there probably won't be any action on Main Street at nine thirty when they come through.
And we have the cooperation from the high school to use the COVID matter, elementary school parking, for access to the volunteers.
Very much. Thank you, Eddie. Great job, great, great event. Lou, you're on.
The only item I have is the Resolution 2021 in the, because of the festive Christmas season, holiday season. This is resolution and authorizes, board authorizes the suspension of parking meter enforcement between September first, two thousand twenty-one and January second, two thousand twenty-two. And I would suggest that the board authorize the suspension of parking meter enforcement during this period of time to enhance the availability of local business, you know, customers to take to downtown.
Do we have a motion to accept resolution eight dash twenty twenty-one, parking meter holiday? Got a motion, second, third, and fourth, any discussion?
Yeah, we're all on that.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries, I got a few things on, on my agenda, the, the first part, you know, we've got an election coming up in May of two thousand twenty-two. We have to put together the reappointments of the Board of Supervisors for the election coming up in May. And we, we actually have to do it today because our appointments end at the end of the year and I think we've got one more meeting, so. I'm going to list the names of the individuals, I think, I think we can do it as a group, is that one of the, I mean, this is a group? Do it as a group, okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Margie Lystone, Ms. Sarah Guns, Mr. Dave Massimiano, Ms. Paula Newton, Ms. Kinsley Schaefer, Ms. Karen Smith, as our Board of Supervisors for the election. Do we have a motion? And a motion in a second, any discussion on any of these supervisors, just one thing. Yep. I assumed that there is not a conflict of interest with my son being on the board of elections? Well, that's a good question, your election is coming up, how does the board feel about that?
I could speak to it.
Yes.
He's not campaigning for you. And he has not, he will not handle any vote that has been cast. So there's no chance that he's handling any vote that has been cast for you, he checks people in. And so there's no opportunity for him to touch anything.
He is my treasurer, just to give you that information.
And that's fair enough as well, but he, he will not act as your agent, your treasurer or anything when he's checking people in for the election.
Right, just wanted to be clear on that.
Fair enough.
Well, listen, you disclosed it and I think that was very important. All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. All right, the second thing that I have, I sent to the board prior to my, my little mini-vacation prior to Thanksgiving, some information on TIF bonds. And there was just an article I sent out to everyone and I just wanted to kind of plant the seed. And I don't know if this is the seed that we want to go with, but I wanted to try to do our best that we can gain additional information on exactly what a TIF bond is. I've asked Louis to research it also and he's been researching it, but I'd like to get us an expert in here to explain what it could do for us and can't do for us. I may be trying to accomplish something that can't be done with a TIF bond, but what my goal in this has been, as I, I think I stated in the, outlined in the email, is that we're in a very robust economy in the town of Elton right now. To the point where I believe in five years, our assessment base could actually double. We're currently at about one point one billion dollars in total assessment dollars and in five years, we could be at two point two billion dollars in assessment value of the town of Elton. What does that mean? Well, it means that if that goes out the way that I believe it will, and I'm not an economist or anyone that can work these numbers, and I think that's why we need help here, is that our real estate tax base is, let's say, eight million dollars a year. This could be an additional eight million dollar a year revenue to the town, this is what, where I'm at with this. We've all sat up here and we've talked about capital improvement planning for the town, for our future. No matter who's up here, whether it's the next mayor and the next commissioners, I think we owe it to knowing that there's going to be a lot of money coming into the town of Elton. I think that we need to put together some type of capital improvement plan so that the next group or the group after that just doesn't take the money and unloot wisely spend it. Now, we could give that money back to our residents, which I'm very happy to do also. But I think that there's strategic planning that we need to do, I think now is the opportunity to start that planning process with the amount of dollars that I perceive that's going to come in at this point. So we have this, this, the project, and I'll name a few. The South Fields Project, we also have a project, it's up near the Cracker Barrel. We have additional hundred-plus houses going in off of Thompson Estates. We also have the townhouses that are being built right now on Baker's Hill. There's additional, I know Jean Minter's on here, she could tell us where all the other actions going, but off of muddy lane, there's going to be, I think it's called Patriot's Way or Patriot's Landing, which could be another couple hundred homes. So my point in this, with a TIF bond or TIF funding or TIF designation, my understanding that if we designate the area before the state assesses these properties, then the dollars between the assessment and what it actually comes out to assess with, could be dollars that we could use to acquire a bond to do future capital improvements, or we have to designate capital improvements, that's what I'm not clear on and that's what we need help with. So where I'm getting at is, we have some projects that I believe that are extremely important. We've always talked about the flood control project in the town of Elton. The flood control project is one that, when we looked at it in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand one, or whatever year it was, I think the board looked at it again in two thousand seven. You're looking at a fifteen to twenty, twenty-five billion dollar project, there's no funding really available for that unless we figure out how we can come up with fifty percent of it anyhow. We talk about long-term funding, I'm glad Sam Goldworth's here, hopefully you're representing the fire company today. But, you know, we talk about long-term funding for Singly Fire Company. I think every one of us sees all the time that the amount of calls, it's not only happening in our county, but across the state and all states, that there's a dire need for some plan in place to keep these things viable. Our charter is very clear, I mean, our charter, health and safety of our residents, and we have to do whatever we can to make our health and safety is our, to me, our priority. And we have to figure out how we can long-term fund these things. And I'm not sure if the TIF is the answer, but I'd like to get more information to know if it is. If it is, and we can just designate areas, we designate those areas now before the assessments go up and it gives us more room to work with. I also recognize that the town of Elton, we need dollars in our budget today. We have, I think when you look at our budget numbers, our, our revenue is increasing with assessments. We've, over the last eight years, we've used a tremendous amount of our unassigned fund balance, we use that for multiple reasons. So, I mean, our debt is very little because we pay cash for a lot of equipment and capital purchases. To me, that was a good thing, we had money that we either needed to give back to the residents or we spent it on items that we need for our community. So I want the, if the town is okay with that, then, then I'd like to really instruct Louis to get us an expert in here to meet with us and understand that. And then along with that, I would also like to find someone that could give us an idea of what these dollars could be. I may be way off base when I say our assessment is going to be up another one point one billion dollars, because I don't know. But who could we get for that, I don't know who we would bring in to determine that. And it may be out there already, there might be someone that, I think we were all here when Ray Jackson was here the other week and he, and he gave his presentation and he was saying that the Trammell Crowe Project, once it's done, it's a three hundred billion dollar project, it'll be done in another year and a half, two years. We talk about that, but does that really mean, does that compute into the dollars that, that I'm thinking? I hear this all the time from the sportsplex that it's going to, there's going to be sixty million dollars worth of revenue coming in just from the sportsplex every year in transient dollar. What does that mean?
I don't know.
I don't know what that means, is it sixty million dollars to our hotels, our restaurants?
Maybe in the business pockets, not necessarily.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I don't understand and I need help understanding that. So if the board would give me permission and Louis permission, I'd like to ask if we find maybe a couple of those experts that can come in and explain that to us. Yeah, I think it's great, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I'm all for capital.
Perfect, I think, I think we need to come up with a capital plan that would last us for years. The, the other thing that we talked about and we've talked about in the past was how we can, if this, if this doesn't trigger into being the right way, and I think that this board's going to have to make some tough decisions on whether we figure out how we can fund, help fund this fire department for years to come. And that either has to happen with, currently, right now, it's based on assessment value and I think the town, the residents of the town, in their taxes give about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to the fire department. We've all seen the presentation, we know, I don't think that we're, we recognize that there needs to be probably, quite frankly, I'd like to see ten times that.
I was going to say that.
I, I think.
They need ten times.
I think they need ten times that, and one option that we could have, and I don't want to use the word raising taxes, but, and I won't use that word. I'm not using that word, raising taxes, but we would change the percentage that's in the charter that would reflect that where it'd be ten times greater. Now, if we did that, that means that we're a million dollars short of revenue that goes somewhere else and we just, today, we don't have that. We don't have that. The other option that we have is that we would put a fee on the water bill that we talked about, but as Commissioner Piner has always said, those water bills aren't going up, they're going to go down. And I don't want to speak for you, I'm just kind of saying that, but we, we, we recognize that and I get the same water bill, we all do. We've, we've looked at, we're doing a little bit of an analysis where we're, I didn't want to include in that figure people that aren't in the town of Elton, so we've got a large portion of people that, not a large portion, but we have Elqueta Estates and Holly Hall Estates, which quite frankly, I don't think it's fair to add any additional dollars into their mix if we go that route with the water bill. So I think in a short window here, I'd like to find out, just all these scenarios, I know I'm rambling and I'm speaking here. But I guess the, the last thing that I wanted to bring up about this is we've got, we got the American Rescue money that came in and we have we're, we still, or maybe we, I think we're focused that we know we can use it for infrastructure. Is, is the direction that we've been going here, but Lou, I'm going to ask you have, if, if we wanted to acquire a fire truck for the fire department, is that considered infrastructure, do you think?
No.
That wouldn't be considered for their infrastructure qualifies under. Have we received any additional guidance other than what we have?
The guidance I have identifies certain things, but not necessarily capital money for equipment. Public improvements, things like that, even contributions to the businesses are part of that, if you have a program in place.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you use it. And of course, you end up being audited, so you've got to be careful about how you use it.
And, and I guess I would ask you to continue to stay on top of Maryland Municipal League for Guidance. And I know you have, and I, I've seen your emails going back and forth. So, and that's our other challenge, we're just not getting, there's not, it, it just seems like every municipality, I've spoken to multiple mayors. And we're all kind of in the same boat about trying to give money to nonprofits or trying to help in that way and we're just not getting the, the correct responses back. But please keep on that, because I think we need to come up with a solution here, I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, I'd like to see some clear and right ways that we can use this plan in front of you, so I can replay it, I think we would all.
Lou, could we ask that direct question, who could we ask that direct question, or did you ask a direct question if we wanted to?
Well, there's, there's much guidance stuff for ARCA online, that's where I go to, and of course, when you go to M and L, they reference you.
True, that's like.
Those links, you know, to where it is, from the, comes originally from US Treasury and all that. But the thing you have to keep in mind that ARCA was designed for COVID, I mean, COVID, I'm sorry, COVID response. So a lot of things were related to that, health issues and things like that, order and sewer, I don't know, I would figure out about connecting. That is one of the things that the Congress authorized through that act. But if you need more information, I, I just have to go into a link and print it out and send it to you, but.
Okay.
Well, it's all online, all that information, that's the only place you have to get it.
They have mentioned some of this COVID money that we are receiving has been used for lost of income during that time, right?
Yes.
So the responders, the, I mean, the, the medical field, the fire company, they lost, they hit by all the action they had to put out during the COVID times, couldn't that be one of the things that we get stressed on? In order to get funding towards the fire company, all the runs that they had to make for the emergencies.
I can't answer that question, I can't tell you.
A lot of ponderation, because COVID?
I mean, my, my research has indicated from large municipalities generally, they have very specific programs in place that we don't have. And able to manage probably because they're rural average, like I give them money to nonprofits, there could be hundreds of nonprofits in Elton that would be eligible for money under that ARCA. So you can't just say, well, I'm going to give it to this nonprofit or that nonprofit. So you have to make a program that people apply to, but that's. Uh, so you, you have to make a program that people apply to, but that's, uh.
But I'm, I'm using this as, uh, we've got, uh, I guess. Evidence or details of how many times they went out on runs during that time. See, these are documented.
When they went out on runs, so whether it's COVID related or not.
But I'm just, I'm just using that as a.
Lou, can we, can you get what the programs are so we could digest it? What kind of program?
I will get it.
Okay, appreciate it.
I can give you.
You know, once a teacher, always a teacher. I look at and I look at what, uh, Rob Massimiano was saying. You know, you, you've got this money. And you're talking about documentation. Sometimes it's difficult to understand documentation when you read it. And it's like all the municipal mayors and others, everybody still has doubt about this money. And I was just wondering if there were people who were the originators or somebody from these offices. Who could actually come in and, and speak to the fact of whatever it is you can do in the act of.
Well, there's no question in my mind, there are citizens that probably, uh. Uh, were born into this. In other words, uh, whenever you have a complex federal grant or a. An act like this enacted, uh, there will be people that study it and become experts at it. Um, I can look into that for you.
I, I appreciate it because you know, even before we've talked about this money, everybody has their idea. What they will do with the money and who they're going to help. Now we've come to the point that there's things we can do and can't do, but. And that, and, and nobody's actually saying that actually.
One thing I know we can use it for is water and sewer.
Yeah, I, I know that.
There's no question there because I already are spending money, this money on water and sewer projects and the other.
What we have with the, uh, Red Hill Reservoir and the UV, we're spending over a half a million just for the water treatment plan. I already run that through EPA and MDE and that's authorized. So that's a five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars just. The treatment plan, the visa. And then the probably the rehab of the, uh. Reservoir might be. Well above a million. I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking between one and two million dollars to do that. So. It's going to be all the money spent.
Well, I, I think I'll go with Commissioner Givens. Maybe along with, uh, the other two experts we're going to ask to come in. Maybe we can get someone from M and L to come in or, uh, uh, ARPA, maybe someone from the federal government.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd find one. We are on a timeline here. We need to make a decision by what?
Uh, you got till twenty twenty four to commit, till twenty twenty four.
Yeah, to commit to it.
So in the meantime, we trust you, Daniel.
Well, sit in Congress, let me tell you that. All right. All right. Uh, we also have, uh, the Town of Elton twenty twenty one holiday, uh, decorating contest. Currently we have five participants in this. So as we get closer, uh, in the next few days, maybe, uh. Does everyone have the sheet?
No.
Okay, maybe we can give everyone a sheet of this. And then, uh, in the evening, go by and take a look. At these five residents and, uh, we'll, uh, all do some voting to see which one. Earl, I see Earl's house listed four times. It's not.
What was that?
And, uh. Uh, before I, uh, turn this over to the, uh. Board for their comments, it's been a, uh, you know, uh. Yesterday, uh, there's still a lot of unnews in our community, uh, about the shooting that we had across the street. Uh, yesterday, uh, uh, you know, my, I think, I know that our hearts go out for the victim and the victim's family. Here and, uh. Uh, you know, I know that the Elton Police Department with assistance from the Maryland State Police and I'm sure the. Cecil County, uh, Sheriff's Department is all working diligently, uh, to find, uh. Uh, the culprit of this and, uh, I know we're going to get to the bottom of it. Uh, there's no doubt about it. Uh, but I would like to ask everyone, uh, you know, let's just take a second and, uh. Give a moment of silence just to think about the victim across the street there. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Meyer, you're on.
Uh, I have just, uh, let's see, one, one thing to bring up. I was at Elton Lodge, um, a couple of days this week and. I think, uh, we need to either come up with some kind of a sign or something. Where people are taking their dogs and walking and dropping at, at locations. I mean. Two times this week it's just been, someone's making that a target for them to bring their dog and let it just do their waste there. Um, I know it's interesting, I do know Goodby sent them deep, but I started sending a picture down just to say, look, we need to either. Put up stuff like the fines, the dumping on not just town property.
Is there a fine?
It's, in some towns there are.
I think we should, uh, we should be able to do, uh, I'm just doing it up and then just send them on.
Oh, well, I think, uh, Jessica and them, they do know. But they have a camera back there, so you can use the camera and see who's donated and have a conversation with them. But we need to have signs. Okay, um, that's one thing that, that was on my mind to talk about, but, uh. Also the, um, sound system that they're getting. I talked to, uh, Jessica and was mentioning that. Is the town able to help out and tell either grant? They're supposed to hear some, I think, as, as of the first budget grant that's going to be getting for the sound system, the downtown. Um, they, uh, Elton Lodge came in and talked about, is there anything we can do in, um, speeding up the process? If we'll say maybe, um.
You mean a call for Christmas?
Pay for it and reimburse it from the grant or is that legal to do that?
We're not sure whether they'll get the grant, that's one thing, right?
You want to pay, you want to pay them, wherever you pay them.
No, 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 not paying them, not paying them, uh, not. I'm saying they're, they want them to, um. Get the sound system that's from the funding from, uh, a grant that they're supposed to receive for that. Um, just wondering if there any way we can help speed up the process as a town.
Oh, you mean give their money faster?
No. Yeah, that's the word I'm looking for. That's the word I'm looking for. Are we able to loan the money to them?
No.
Okay, there's, that's the answer. Okay, I'm done.
But the board could override my recommendation.
I'm, I'm just asking if, if there's any way, the word she said loan them the money until their grant came in, but, um, we're good.
Mr. Massmiano.
Thank you, Lou. Well, I'd like to remind everybody that this Friday is the Christmas tree lighting, correct?
Yes.
Of course, I wouldn't be there because I'm planning to be at W East. Um, also Sheila's pantry in College Worth Manor, if they're looking for donations. Of any type of food items or food service items. Um, I plan on making a trip up there soon. If anybody that can help there, that'd be greatly appreciated. Um, I have a musician friend, like, contacted me a couple of days ago and he was asking me. If I knew of any place that they could try out a new drummer and a bass player for their band. And I said, no, I don't. You know, like a studio they could go into. Then I got to wondering, thinking outside the box just a bit. Do we have a room available in the rec center or the armory that we may turn into? A recording studio, a practice studio and rent it out to, um, bands that want to practice there?
I'm asking Mary to unmute herself right now.
I don't know if Mary would have a spot there.
I mean, we have rooms that just don't, they're kind of, um, not something that we could dedicate. Permanently as a, as a place, but as, you know, uh. For, you know, one, one or two times, whatever, if they would do that, that's fine. But like something. As a dedicated space, probably not really, but there is.
If someone could reserve.
Yes.
A space.
Yes.
You'd work out a fee.
Why do we sound heard?
Yeah, you gotta remember that's not something that's just going to be.
No, it'll be loud.
And then, uh, they have places next door, so you gotta think about that. The thing is different from just threatening for, uh.
Now, I, I will mention, uh, to everyone, I, I know it's not, uh, uh, anything confidential, but. One oh seven North Street is under contract and that will become a recording studio.
There you go.
How you like that? See how quick I can make things happen for you? But you're looking at probably. Uh, once they settle, probably a year before that would be available to anyone. But it's going to be a venue that'll be, uh, a recording studio and, uh, entertainment there.
Right, I did hear about that company. I don't know that bands would be able to go there and set up and, and do their practice sessions.
Rob, is this a one-time thing you're looking for or?
Well, this particular guy, yeah, he was a one-time thing, but it got me to thinking that this may be an additional source of income. If we could offer that too, because there's a lot of bands around and often they need a place to practice.
Well, if this is a one-time thing, we'd be need quickly, couldn't we? None of these is ever here or next door?
What, the old parts of our school?
Yeah. I mean, if you're just looking for something quick that, um, we need.
Who, who makes the decision on that? Sheller or?
You can just have somebody to run a public property and.
Yeah, they're wanting to do it tomorrow, so, you know.
Place isn't even suitable for habitation right now.
I didn't know.
That's why we got out of there. That's something good. It's awful over there.
Yeah, I just thought that may spark some, some discussion, some thoughts.
What about, what about, um?
Yeah, what does your case on name? Showcase on main?
That's what I said, showcase on.
Showcase on main.
But you do have the background, the background of the alliance, like she said.
You own a town hall.
With the tall seat with the big ceiling in that building, that, that room?
Yeah, that would be a good place. She being in, that would probably be a good spot to do it.
Well, I'll give this guy, uh, the numbers for, maybe I'll just send for Jessica and I'll stand and see if we can help him out.
Don't forget to ask Jessica for, I mean, that, that, I'm giving the number.
Anything else, sir? Um, I'm starting an open mic at Elverberry Brewery. Tomorrow night will be the first night. And then the thirtieth, we'll do it again. And throughout the next year, we're going to be doing it. Every last Thursday of the month from six to nine. So that should, uh, that should be an interesting event. And we'll expect you there.
Nice, I talk to you.
Okay, I did wonder, uh, before I turn it over to Gene, uh. Our town. Christmas party, uh, reception for our thank you for all of our town boards. Uh, is on Sunday, December fifth at the, uh, Community Center. From one o'clock to four o'clock. Uh, I knew that, uh, everything has come along with plans, so hopefully, uh. We'll have a good turnout. Gene, you are on.
Um, I, I do want, is someone going to be at the Christmas tree lighting Friday?
I probably will not be there.
The, the reason I'm, I'm just saying, I know it's the first Friday, the tr- the tree lighting, a lot going on. But, you know, on a personal note, my husband has chemo that day and generally. We try not to be in public, um. For at least twenty-four, you know, forty-eight hours, you know, before and after, so. Uh, but if no one's going to be there, I mean, I can, I can try to just stop down. I'm just wondering.
Earl's in charge.
Earl's in charge.
Earl's in charge.
Sounds good. And I like your idea about the capital improvement planning. I think we should go on that pretty quickly. I'd also like to have permission from the board, um, perhaps to. Uh, start the process of maybe putting the committee together about the funding. Um, like to talk to you about that maybe at the workshop.
I'm all bearable.
Okay.
I think we got a couple of numbers already.
Yeah, that's.
I come home, I said, I have three numbers.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I was hoping to hear.
There's definitely interest in that.
Okay, we maybe talk about that, uh, next week at the workshop.
Perfect.
All right, um, I think that's it.
Charles?
Uh, before I get my spiel, I want to piggyback on a couple of things. I know Earl mentioned the fact about the dogs. Downtown doing whatever, um, whatever solution we find, it just does not need to be a, a downtown business solution. Should be a solution for the town of Elton because even we, we live in places where somebody might do the same thing, but, you know, it should be. An all problem for everyone. Um, secondly, um, Lois, uh, Willhouse Drive, they were supposedly something down to the trees. Uh, resident out there had, uh, called in about that during the summer months and Dan was aware of it. I don't know what's, anything was done to that.
We all have.
Right, they was both in some of the trees.
Okay.
Uh, two thirteen East High Street, is there a status on that?
Got final stuff from the county just before Thanksgiving, like Wednesday or so, so, uh. Get back into that and try to wrap this up this week. The, what remains to be done at this point is we can, uh, deeds are, that, that building sits astride. The property line straddles two lots, so there are two separate deeds there. Uh, we've redone the deed to the point that we put a little bit left to be done. Then they get recorded. Then we'll do a, uh, add-on subdivision. Create one lap, one combined lot out of two, and then we'll be prepared to, to tear down the building.
So is, is our target date, or it doesn't have to be much closer than what you were?
Yes, I think we've resolved any, there weren't really disagreements. We just were coming up with different numbers and I think we resolved that.
And with everything almost prepared for Sunday, what is the format for Sunday?
Uh, Kathleen is handling the, uh, format, but, uh, I think it's, uh, we've got Hill Culinary. Is doing the food and, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Piner is doing the, the, uh, sound system. Setting it up. Uh, it's wonderful and.
So what I'm saying, I guess maybe I explained it right, is somebody. Going to tour, the people that come, when you come and sit there, you come and say it up.
Mary will be, Mary will be there. Aren't you, Mary?
She's going to be there, but is there a format?
I don't think there's any plan on the walking people around. I think the likelihood.
Okay, that's good. And, and, and lastly, I guess we do bring up a good point about this soon. Are we going to keep that or not? I know Lewis has mentioned that. Got another virus out there and.
We should keep soon.
We're going into the.
Available to us.
Right.
Because I think we go, um, downhill.
And then I think we all, uh, need to stay aware of COVID nineteen and, you know, myself, I just experienced something that. I didn't think about, we went to Delaware on, sorry, that basketball team and had a scrimmage. When we get over there, the officials said that, you know, everybody in there had to have their, um, mask on. Well, the kids went up down the floor, the coaches, people on the sideline had their, their mask on, which was very protective. And we go down to Queen Anne's Cali last night and have a scrimmage and everything was just the opposite. Your mask was off, kids on the floor playing. And what I'm saying right now, I guess nobody really has a true. What I want to say. A true thought about this virus, and I mean, I know. We hope it goes away, but I look around here and I only see maybe one person with a mask on and. None else. And then we'll be here and we may go to a restaurant and we put our mask on it. It's, 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 it's just mind-boggling. So I guess what I'm saying, there's no true identity on which it's supposed to do, but. Unless you leave it to yourself.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's yourself and, and, uh, everyone should do their best to get vaccinated.
I'm done.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, this is the time, uh, that we open up the floor for anyone that might have anything to good for the town of Elton. Anyone in the audience have anything for the good of the town of Elton? Anyone on Zoom have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton?
Let me ask.
Yes.
Um, two things. The next, uh, workshop is not until January fourth. You mentioned. Two things. The next workshop is not until January 12. You mentioned the next workshop because you won't have a meeting next week.
Oh, I thought it was next week.
There's no workshop next week. It's just a regular meeting.
But we can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then also too, if the board will consider trying to move forward with fireworks because in January, that's when we'll start getting contacted from the fireworks company. Mayor, I know you wanted to have a committee and we can talk about that, but bottom line, I anticipate.
We're running out of time. I think we bring that up next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have anything on reverse Wednesday and June in January?
We have the first second, it's, it's back in the three meetings of March in January.
Right. This meeting is adjourned.